Let's start the meeting in the stand for.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Here.
Counselor Jelly.
Here.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Here.
Mayor Boucher.
Here. Announcements, do any counselors have anything that they would like to announce at this time?
I would just like to welcome Trish Krego as our newest employee, the utility and infrastructure director.
Welcome, Trish.
Welcome aboard.
And you had something earlier if you wanted to bring that.
Oh, sure, yeah. Just thank you to the police and the fire department for hosting and helping out at the. Can't even think of the name of it.
National Night Out.
National Night Out. It was a great event and appreciate you doing that for the community.
Thank you. Anything else from council? We have no public hearings tonight. Communications are all listed. Mr. Mulder, could you give us a short synopsis of the pre-agenda presentation on the Hermanton Arena design?
Sure, we have been meeting with members of Haha and the school district, including the varsity hockey coaches on the design of the arena. We are kind of in that schematic design, which puts up blocks down in general sizes and square footages and how they are organized. And I feel like we're getting pretty close to what we think is that schematic design. And so that includes locker rooms, stadia seating, and revamped lobby. So we're getting close to that and hopefully we'll have some final schematic designs probably about sometime in September.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is public discussion. This is a time that individuals can address the council about any item not on the agenda. Time limit we ask is three minutes per person. We will have also public discussion available during each of the agenda items before they are approved. Is there anyone here that wishes to address general public discussion either in chambers or online?
My name is Corey Larson, fifty-three, forty-three, Split Rail Drive. And I'm here again to discuss the future of the fire department and the public safety division. So briefly, what my experience looks like, I've been in the fire service for about fifteen years. Currently hold the position of assistant chief of a combination fire department. That serves about twenty-two thousand people locally. I've also served as EMS service director, firefighter for the city of Superior, operations manager for Lake County Ambulances, then also a paramedic and field training officer with Gold Cross. My education is bachelor's degree in EMS management, associate's degree in fire science. I'm currently working on my master's degree in public administration with an emphasis in emergency management. After the last meeting, I did send an email to everybody in regards to a synopsis report that I put together. And I'm here to see if anybody's got any questions or concerns into anything that I put together.
And questions from council? No, sir.
Okay. With that, I would ask that I provide a presentation on what a fire department would look like in the event that it's not underneath the public safety director, but a fire chief-driven fire department at the next board meeting, if you so wish.
So what, what do you think are the negatives to what we're doing versus having the department as you see it?
Public safety director, again, not a very common model. And there's, there's too many operational components that are different between a law enforcement and a fire department. With a fire chief who's got the experience, the dedication necessary, they're going to be able to run that fire department and really drive it towards a community health and fire prevention aspect. Have any public safety director, and this has been seen time and time again, that there's too many discrepancies and a lot of times it can create a conflict of interest between appropriating funds and also those different administrative and operational components.
You, you don't think that the fire commander and the existing experience?
We can get into this during a presentation when he wants to give that to us if you'd like. You can schedule that with the city clerk for our next meeting, such as the presentation you sat through today on the arena. It would be something like that and she'll put that on our next agenda if you wish. You also are free to comment on the one fire department connected if you'd like resolution we have tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess. So wouldn't what he has to say tonight have to do with two thousand twenty-three dash one twelve?
It does, but he would like to give us a presentation on an alternative method also. And that, that's something that under this type of forum with three-minute limits, we can't do.
Yeah, I'm just, I just worry that if, you know, something were to come up where we don't feel that the Department of Public Safety is the way to go, then we've already created the position.
Um, we haven't filled any positions yet and, you know, if we pass a resolution this evening, that can be changed at any future meeting. And actually, if we all voted for something, anyone that voted for this point of view that succeeded can bring it up again. If somebody votes against it and then loses, they can't bring it up, or somebody votes for it and it loses, they can't bring it up. That's some rules we have to follow, but we can change any motion or anything we pass at any later meeting.
That was just my only concern was that maybe that that position being created would have started the ball rolling in a direction that we couldn't stop it if.
No, we, we can stop it as long as it's not filled.
Gotcha.
Is there any other public discussion either in chambers or online? If anyone wishes to speak to the council about anything not on the agenda, please start with your name and address. And there will be one last opportunity for public discussion. If anyone wishes to speak to any item not on the agenda, please speak up. Okay, we will close the general public discussion and move to the consent agenda, which includes minutes, approval or correction of the July seventeenth, twenty-twenty-three city council minutes and accounts payable in the amount of seven hundred fifty-six thousand, four hundred fifty-six dollars and twelve cents. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolutions, Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one oh seven, a resolution approving special use permit for construction of an accessory structure in excess of twelve hundred square feet in the R three zoning district at fifty-four ninety-one West Arrowhead Road, and imposing conditions thereon. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc. Mr. Mulder, should we have Mr. Johnson explain this?
Yes, please.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. As you'd mentioned, this is a special use permit for the construction of an accessory structure that's greater than twelve hundred and square feet. His property is located at five four nine one West Arrowhead Road, which is on the north side of Arrowhead and just east of Lindell Road. This is an existing two-point-five acre lot of record. It's an R three zoning district. Under the R three zoning, you can have a twelve hundred square foot structure with just a building permit. Anything greater than that requires a special use permit. So the applicant's looking to construct a forty by forty or sixteen hundred square foot accessory structure. The ordinance allows building coverages on a lot up to thirty-five percent. In this case, the proposed building along with the other home and garage that he currently has would be a five-point-two percent lot coverage, so we're well under that. The setbacks with the proposed structure either meet or greatly exceed the minimums that the city has for accessory structure buildings. This proposed building would match the other garage structure that's currently on the property. And this accessory structure would be utilized for personal property. There would be no business activity or housing associated with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? With no council questions, is there any public input on this resolution? Do you have any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one oh seven? If anyone wishes to comment on this resolution, please start with your name and address. We'll close the public input and move to a roll call vote.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Next is Resolution two thousand twenty dash one zero eight, resolution approving an amendment to the city handbook regarding construction contract change orders. Do we have a motion? Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder.
So this, it comes out of the discussion that we had about a month or so ago about the change orders we have on construction projects. We've never had a formal policy on this and this formal policy would allow change orders of less than twenty-five thousand to be approved by the city administrator. And that, as long as the aggregate doesn't exceed ten percent. It also just acknowledges the fact that there are times when there are emergency change orders. And because of time, those may need to be made by the city administrator and then we report those back at the next meeting. But it just kind of clarifies, you know, how that process will work.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one oh eight? Do we have any input from the public on this resolution for a change to the city handbook? Is there any public input on this resolution? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one oh nine, resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and deliver an agreement for architectural services with DSGW Incorporated. Do we have a motion?
Would you approve?
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, and I've been informed that Counselor Geisler will not be voting on this. And would you like to make a statement regarding that?
I'm, I am not voting on this issue because it's my employer, so figure it'd be a conflict of interest.
Thank you. Mr. Mulder?
So as you know, we are in the process of designing the improvements to the ICE Arena and we've hired, we were proposing that we hire DSGW to do that. We went through an RFP process back in March of twenty-twenty-two, and so this is the contract that would, for those services.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on the resolution regarding agreement with architecture, with DSGW for architectural services? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one oh nine? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one ten, resolution awarding contract for one-ton pickup truck to North Country GM in the amount of fifty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and eighty-seven cents plus applicable taxes and fees. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder.
So this is for a twenty fourteen, a twenty twenty-four pickup for the public works department. This is a little bit of an awkward situation in so much that this is in the twenty twenty-four budget that you haven't approved yet. But we've talked about the capital improvement plan and because of lead times, we are asking permission to go ahead and award this contract so that we can have it delivered by the time, sometime in twenty twenty-four.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? I do have one. When is this paid for then, in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, it will be paid actually upon, upon delivery.
Thank you.
Maybe twenty twenty-five then.
That's hope not, yeah.
Any other questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Do we have any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one ten? Last opportunity for public input on the resolution awarding a contract for the purchase of a one-ton pickup truck. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one eleven, resolution awarding contract for a pothole trailer to STEPP Manufacturing in the amount of fifty-three thousand seven hundred dollars plus applicable taxes and fees. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder.
So this is a twenty twenty-three capital improvement plan project or item. We have this in the twenty twenty-three budget, but we are looking to replace the pothole, existing pothole trailer. The one has, that we have is gone past its expected life, so we're looking to replace it with this purchase.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council?
This is coming out of the twenty twenty-three budget, right?
Yes.
We probably won't get it until twenty twenty-four though, is that kind of something?
If that is the case, we'll probably have to do a budget amendment where we'll carry over that money into the twenty-four budget.
Anything else from council? Is there any public input on this resolution? Is there any public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one eleven? Is there any public input on the contract for the purchase of a pothole trailer? Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc.
Aye.
Counselor Geisler.
Aye.
Counselor Jelly.
Aye.
Mayor Boucher.
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one twelve, resolution creating a department of public safety and approving related job descriptions and positions. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Motion dies without a second?
Motion dies for lack of a second.
So then I would only ask is what is the council's wishes in terms of this issue? On January one, we are not going to have a volunteer fire department anymore. We need to take some steps in arranging for an alternative delivery method. So what is your direction in that regard? Perhaps we should have tabled maybe, but I was hoping to hear, I know we have some concerned citizens that are Hermantown residents with, with fire experience that want to speak to us regarding this tonight and I guess I would like to hear them out.
That's.
A little bit more.
Yeah, I guess I didn't feel comfortable making a motion without first hearing from the public. Maybe that's more of a procedural issue, I mean.
We can't discuss it till we have the motion on the table. Now, we can reread this and we can second it for discussion and the counselors are free to vote for or against whatever they wish when it comes time to vote. But right now the motion is dead. Would anyone like to bring this up as a motion for discussion?
Can we discuss if we move to table it?
Nope. There's no discussion on tabling.
I would second.
We have to have a new motion. Do we have a motion still?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Counselor Geisler. Now we can move to Mr. Mulder for synopsis.
Sure. So as you know, we've been talking about what is the next phase in providing fire service. And we've been having this conversation for the last six or seven months. The fire department has said that as of December thirty-first, they will no longer be providing fire service to the city. And so we have been making plans to create a public safety department that would have both police and fire under a director of public safety. These two full-time positions would be, provide kind of the managerial and operational duties for the fire division and that would also respond to calls during the normal shifts. Thus, these positions would report to the director of public safety, which would be the current chief of police, Jim Kreis.
Thank you. Are there any comments right now from council?
Like to hear what they have to say.
We'll go through the process in here, what needs, what is said. I want to point out to everyone that this has been a lot of hard work to resolve an issue that has been in front of us and pending for quite a while. Is there anyone that wishes to comment on this? Please step forward and state your name and address.
My name is Ron Minter, M-I-N-T-E-R. I live at fifty-four seventy-five West Arrowhead Road. Now, I'm not going to address any of the issues of pay staffing, responding to calls, anything like that. What I am going to respond to is or discuss with you the need for the public safety officer. The Hermantown Fire Department has followed the NFPA standards, their guidelines as far as teachings and certifications. Back in nineteen, the late nineteen eighties, Minnesota State Fire Chiefs and Minnesota State Firefighters Association got together and then says, you know, what we have to do is we have to train everyone the same. Hermantown was training one way, Rice Lake was training another, Kenosha third. We get a mutual aid and couldn't work together. They had no idea what they were doing. So he comes out and says, this is what we're going to do while the organizations, fire chiefs and firefighters association. So they developed the certification board and they go through all the steps in a fire department, fire chief, battalion chief, assistant chief, firefighter one, firefighter two, I think someone had a question about that, fire officer one, fire officer two. That's all covered in the state certification board. You have to do training for that and take a test. If you pass, it's a hard test. You don't, you don't go through this thing easy. So realistically, right now, in the state of Minnesota, you could ship a Hermantown firefighter, as long as he's firefighter two, to Bloomington, Minnesota, and he could work with those guys down there because they're trained the same. So that's why that came about. The certification board does not recognize a fire commander. It doesn't exist in the fire service now. I understand it, it exists in the police side of law enforcement. They do have their police commanders. No such thing as a fire commander. If you put this guy in that position, they have training every year. They got fire chiefs association. They meet in October, Duluth is hosted every third year. And the firefighters association, they all get together and they train. This poor guy is going to be out there like a ugly duckling because he's a fire commander. Well, the chiefs are over here. Is it a title? Yeah, it's a title, but it doesn't exist in the fire service. I agree that a person needs to be in charge of a situation. I'm sorry, I apologize if I go over my three minutes, but I'll try to make it fast. Law enforcement, if there's civil disobedience, if there's a riot or something going on, law enforcement goes in there, you've got your police chief there, boom, he's in charge, not a problem. We get a tornado that comes through, we get a hazmat spill, we get a large fire, you got the fire chief. He's in charge of that situation. EMS organizing that, mitigating a spill, clean up afterwards if you have to extricate people from houses. That's the fire chief's job. Ninety-five percent of all calls can be mitigated by those two people. Who run into that five percent, okay? The five percent would be who's going to order the creators or the owners to come out and clean up after a tornado? Or if we've got crews that are working twenty-four for seven for three days, who's going to buy their food? That comes down to the mayor. He's your public safety director. And he is, we haven't had to use him because fire department, when I was in office, we were able to mitigate everything. But if you had a big one, someone's going to have to pay the bill. And that's where the mayor would come in. As far as having a director of safety, helping a fire chief come into this situation, that position. I heard some of the recommendations for the qualifications for fire chief. If this gentleman has the minimum requirements that you request, there is no doubt in my mind that he would be able to manage and put together a fire department. Done it before, I'm sure that he will do it again. And with the help of fire department members now and any council liaison, you could work together with that. You could put him in, my recommendation is hire that fire chief right away. Don't, you don't worry about other positions down the road. Are these guys going to walk out January or December thirty-first? Seriously, they're going to be there. If a Hermantown resident needs help, they're going to be there. And they will help that new fire chief come along. Hire him as soon as you can, get him on board, get him trained. Time is short. You still have, what, six months, five months to do this? There's qualified people out there and they're more than willing to come up to Hermantown. We had the Taj Mahal when we go to the fire chiefs association because of our building next door. Questions? None? I didn't do that good of a job. Okay, well, if you think of any questions afterwards, I'm going to hang around, so please feel free.
Thanks, chief. Is there any other public input on Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one twelve?
Zachary is forty-four twenty-five, Cold Tree Clean. So I started this process a year ago with Mayor Chief Boucher, or Chief Trey, sorry, Mr. Mulder.
Don't promote me.
Sorry. So we have looked at many different ideas. We started with four ideas. We started with four ideas. We started with cop running medicals, I look at your attention now, you have cop running medicals, that ain't could happen. We did the cost analysis if we hired nine full-time people and what it would look to the taxpayers of Hermantown. We can't do it. So we have put a lot of time and effort into this, meeting with other different organizations in the cities. The whole thing about the fire commander, that all came up because of a spot on the org chart to match with the police. The guy's going to be called the fire chief. He has all the certs for the fire chief, but we don't need a fire chief that sits and just does management stuff. We need him to run calls during the day because we're trying to do this. What, oh, we're trying to do as close to it can as the volunteer budget that we have now. It's going to be a little bit more. And the other thing that Mr. Mulder or Mr. Minter said about the volunteers are going to be here past January first, they can't meet, it's all liability insurance. All our insurance is done December thirty-first. So it's four months, we have to move along. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to comment on this resolution? One last opportunity for public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one twelve. We're moving back to council, given the information that's been brought to us by the public. Are there any questions from council of staff?
Have we ran into any situations where a fire chief reports to a director of public safety?
There are half a dozen examples at least in the state of Minnesota that do that. And we've, and in our process, we've looked at that process. And we've talked to those departments to see how it works. And we've had positive responses.
Yeah, so I guess that, what Mr. Minter there mentioned, I think that's what I was recalling as needing a fire chief versus a fire commander. If that's the major hurdle, I guess, is it just a money issue at that point, hiring a chief versus a commander?
It might be a title issue. I think the qualifications are the same that we're asking for. But let's give the other two of you a chance to comment. I always go last and I've got a couple of things to say.
I just, first of all, thanks for the citizens that have come forward with their comments. And you know, it always, to me, it always takes passion to come and and talk to the council. You could be doing a lot better things on a sunny Monday night in the summer, but, so I appreciate that. We're all inexperienced at this and we trust that, you know, we put the city administration and and Chief Kreis in charge of this and come back with some recommendations. So that's kind of what we've been going with. Yeah, there are the models, other models that Mr. Graves talked about. And I certainly, we can't afford nine police officers and I'm.
Nine fire.
Yeah, nine firefighters, nine firefighters. I'm quite still not sure how we're going to afford two, but we'll have to work on that. So I think that if we need a fire chief and why can't we call the commander a fire chief? That might help things. We also, one thing to consider is that Chief Kreis has mentioned retirement, not too far down the road. So it might be something that as he retires out, you know, three, four years down the road, we could reanalyze how we're doing service and we'll have a lot of lessons learned along the way. So I'm certainly not here to slow things down and I want to keep things moving. But I want to make sure we're doing it right and. So I'm just not certain, Mr. Mulder, did I hear you say that there are instances where the fire, there is a fire chief that reports to a director of public safety?
Direct, the, the, the notion of a department of public safety is not unique or one-off in Hermantown. Zach can give me these names better than I can remember, but certainly City of Fridley, Lionel Lakes. We've talked with other departments that are doing this type of work and this type of organizational model.
City of Wyoming.
Are any of those directors of public safety also the chief of police?
Yes.
Okay. I guess, can I say one more thing before you go? Okay. I know I've seen a lot about conflict of interest between having a public safety director who's also the chief of police. Now, Chief Kreis is not here to defend himself tonight, but I would like to go back for for us who have been here through the whole process. And Chief Kreis took his opportunity to promote the police department for more funds this year in the spring. And he took that time to pound the drum for the fire department. So I don't, I just, I don't foresee the the conflict of interest being there as far as from a budgetary standpoint, from Chief Kreis being the director of public safety. And then also, you know, for those of us who have been here the whole time, who have, you know, been to all the presentations, like Chief Kreis is on his way out, we know that. And I think the whole time, the understanding has been that when he does retire, we will revisit this position and have the flexibility then for him to lend his leadership and experience to the new fire chief or whatever we title that position. You know, so we can, we can give that fire department the best chance of success the whole way. And to steal any of your stuff, though.
First, I want to thank all of my brothers and sisters who do work for the fire service. You're doing something I wouldn't do. I couldn't do. But in this process, we have asked staff to resolve an issue for us that was coming to a head that we've been notified quite a while ago was going to happen. The current model of fire service in the city cannot be sustained. We've done everything we can over the last twenty years to alter that model and provide support for the volunteer department so that that could continue. I remember working with a lot of people that built that department, including Chief Minter, and wanted to try and have that system survive as long as possible. I believe that staff has come up with probably the most workable solution that can be seen to the problems that are directly in front of us. That doesn't mean they're the same problems that are going to be in front of us in five years or in two years. But they've given us a step to take our current resources and move to the future. It is going to cost more. But to hire full-time twenty-four-seven firefighters would have been cost prohibitive to the city budget and to the taxpayers. I think that the method that's proposed for the operation of the fire service in Hermantown provides increased quality of service to the residents, does not decrease quality. I personally, my first year in law enforcement served on a public safety department. But public safety departments in Minnesota have gone by that name and have gone under severn, several different structures. That one was police and fire did the same job. Police officers were firefighters and vice versa. Those systems did not work. There is too much spreading of resources and it just doesn't work. But to get started, to have a person with public safety administrative experience directing us as we go forward for the next few years to get this into motion seems the most reasonable alternative that we've looked at so far. We're open to other alternatives and other methods of doing things. They come with pluses and minuses, some of them that we've waived privately through this process while we've directed staff to go forward in their studies. I support the plan that's been put in front of us for the transition to paid firefighters with full-time employees. I know that that's going to change over the years where there will be more full-time employees hired by the city and possibly more hours put in by those paid-on-call people. We had reached a point where everybody was getting worn out by the number of calls. The city will have a chance to administer and prioritize how those calls are handled in the future for the best use of our resources. I think that the title of commander is one that looks to be transitioning from our current police department. It's one that police departments have used to replace the word lieutenant. There may be another title in use statewide for fire services that could more accurately describe or cap off this position. And we will look for that. I don't know if there is such a thing as a battalion chief or another administrative title that could be used to describe this position. But the position itself will be a qualified firefighter and qualified to be a fire chief. So that person will have all the qualifications needed to serve the city of Hermantown. I'm done. If any counselors have any other comments? Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Thank you all. Now we have resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one thirteen. Resolution authorizing and directing the city administrator to execute and deliver League of Minnesota Cities Liability Coverage Waiver Form whereby a city does not waive the monetary limits on the municipal tort liability established by Minnesota statutes four-six-six-point-zero-four. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So the state of Minnesota limits and caps cities liabilities for certain insurance issues and tort liability. So you can buy additional insurance for that, but it's recommended by the League of Minnesota Cities that we do not waive that limit so that that limit would still apply to the city of Hermantown.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Just one for me, we're moving back into liability coverage from the League of Minnesota Cities. And in the past, when we've been served by them for this coverage, we have passed this resolution on a yearly basis. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Is there any public comment on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-three? Anyone wishes to comment on this resolution, please state your name and address. Roll call, please.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-four. Resolution receiving preliminary engineering report and calling public hearing for Stebner Farms Improvement District. We have a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Counselor LeBlanc, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Geisler, Mr. Mulder?
So we have had the city engineer develop a feasibility report to put water, sewer and a road into Stebner Park so that we could promote development both at the back end of the park and along the property next door, which is typically called the Stebner Farms. So maybe David can just kind of explain kind of the findings of the report.
Yeah, thank you, John. Mayor and council, so what we looked at in this preliminary engineering report were were three pieces. One is the water main and part of the park is already served by water. But the, the report recommendation is to complete a loop and connect it back to the water main in Maple Grove Road. The second piece is the sanitary sewer. Currently, the two outbuildings that have restrooms in them are served by a low-pressure force main that would not support development. So the report recommendation is to extend this gravity sanitary sewer from Maple Grove Road south along the driveway that exists today. And the third piece of this is to improve the, what we call driveway into a public roadway that would have curb, gutter, sidewalk, new storm sewer. And then where it interfaces with the existing parking lot to the Stebner Park, we would make some improvements there for traffic mitigation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council?
Active is good.
And if something came up and something falls through, we can always slow this down or stop it. But also, if we're at a certain point, it's always available for any development that could happen in the future. Is there any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-five? If anybody wishes to comment on this resolution, please state your name and address. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-six. Resolution approving the final pay request for the Haynes Road Water Main Extension Project to KTM Paving Incorporated in the amount of two thousand one hundred and twenty dollars. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Jelly, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor LeBlanc, Mr. Mulder?
So this one, one sixteen, is for the Haynes Road final payment for that water extension. You need to go back and do one fifteen for the sewer improvement district.
I will.
We can take them out of order, that's okay. So one sixteen, this is just for that final payment for that work on at Haynes and Anderson Road.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Any public input? Any public input on this resolution? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-six? Roll call, please.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye. Resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-fifteen. Resolution approving pay request number one for sewer improvement district number four fifty-one to vate in the amount of one hundred twenty-seven thousand, two hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, Mr. Mulder?
So this is for the work on sewer and road and water improvements on Okeechobee just north of Anderson Road there. This is their first payment.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council? Is there any public input on this motion? Any public input on resolution two thousand twenty-three dash one-one-five? If anyone wishes to comment on this, please state your name and address. Roll call, please.
Counselor Geisler?
Aye.
Counselor Jelly?
Aye.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Aye.
Mayor Boucher?
Aye, and we don't have a need for a closed session this evening, Mr. Mulder?
No.
Next, we would entertain a motion to recess. Do we have a motion?
Motion to recess.
Motion by Counselor Geisler, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Jelly, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?